Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Pleasantville City Council Board Meeting. Today is June 17, 2024, and the time is 6:30 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city newspaper in accordance with the Open Publics Meetings Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Voca, Davenport, Valero.
Here.
Cabona.
There.
Correa.
Present.
Barclay.
Present.
Obersting.
Tom. Present.
For the record, Councilman Davenport and Councilman Obersting will not be here this May I have approval of previous minutes?
No, sir.
All in favor? Next, we have Laura from CNE.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, we had issued a report dated June 12, 2024. I'll walk through the highlights of the projects, starting first with pump station improvements. We're looking at various upgrades to pump stations, mainly combinator, generator, those type of equipment. That project is substantially designed. We're going through comments with Public Works. Moving forward to the generator over at the rec center, we confirmed with Linda that Phase 1 of that is actually completely installed. Full installation will be completed within the next few weeks.
Just updating on that. When I last updated you, we were prepared to say that full installation would be done in a couple of weeks. We ran into a problem with Allen City Electric just today. And due to some things that they're requesting, it may hold the project up to the end of the summer.
As it relates to Walnut Avenue Park, that's mainly drainage improvements, and that project is currently under design, and we anticipate it being a full project. Various park improvements, so that was basically rehab of the tennis courts and resurfacing the basketball courts, bleachers. The bid opening for that was held last week. My office is going through the bids. We felt like they came back very high, so we will likely recommend rejection and to rebid to maybe get additional bidders. Just note, three people, three bidders picked up the package, but only one responded, so we'd like to just get additional quotes on that. We are going through that. The gym floor installation, that design is underway, and we're seeking input from the city just as it relates to color. I would expect that that would be advertised for mid by the end of the summer. The senior center, so the city was awarded over $2 million worth of funding for the building. We are pending authorization to do the engineering portion of that work. Our 2024 CBBG application was applied for soccer field over at Tilton Park, Tilton Road Park, Clematis Avenue, the tennis, the pickleball, and then crosswalk signage at the bike path. So that is pending authorization through the county. As it relates to our DOT-funded projects, Ansley, Decatur, and Dowdy are all substantially complete and pending pump list items. As you go to what I knew is Phase 2 of Dowdy, but it's really Park Avenue, that project was awarded. We had the preconstruction meeting for that, but we were waiting for the improvements on Dowdy to be done, so we're expecting mobilization on that and that project to move forward. As it relates to the streetscape improvements on Black Horse Pike, we were hoping to have the preconstruction meeting this week, but we just got word from DOT today that they can't attend, so that would likely be scheduled for next week. The Phase 2 of the Black Horse Pike, that proposal is still pending. We're still waiting on Phase 1, but that's pending. Streetscape improvements for Old Turnpike, that remains under maintenance bond. The C routes to school, so GPI is handling that for the city. That's through the Design Assistance Program. We were able to confirm with them that that is pending approval with the state for funding, and once that's done, an agreement will be sent to the city so that preliminary design can occur. I will tell you my experience with the federal projects is they take a lot longer, even though it's a 2022 award. They usually take a while to get off the ground. As it relates to improvements along Ridgewood and Clematis, that project is substantially complete, the design, and that would be advertised later this year. We're pending outside agency approvals for that. The bike path, the lighting improvements of the bike path along Decatur to Milan, that is also substantially complete and has been submitted to the DOT for their concurrence to bid that project. Similarly, the city was awarded a Transit Village grant for improvements to Green Street, from Main Street to Franklin. That also is designed and is with the DOT for concurrent so that that project can bid. South Franklin Boulevard and East Bayview Avenue, that is currently in design, and we anticipate that that would be complete and ready to start submission to the DOT by the end of 2024, with construction commencing in spring of 2025. As it relates to our municipal aid grant from 2024 for improvements on Marine Avenue from Main Street to its terminus to the east, that proposal is waiting authorization, and the project will not include sewer improvements. As it relates to the Transit Village grant for 2024, which was for second, third, and fourth streets from Pleasant Avenue to West Adams Avenue, that we were looking to do a scope modification with the DOT, just to get the price more in line with the funding. Our Safe Streets to Transit 2024 Woodland Avenue and Route 9, that project is substantially designed, and again, is awaiting concurrence from the DOT to bid that project. As it relates to the bike lane improvements along Franklin Boulevard, from the Black Horse Pike to East Alila, that is also substantially designed and with the DOT pending concurrence to bid that project. As it relates to stormwater update, we had, the city was awarded $25,000 from the state to start doing map upgrades. Those have been completed and it has been submitted to the DEP, pending their comments. The Unity Park is still under construction. We expect that to go through the summer and hopefully completion in the fall. They had structural, I think as I even reported last time, there were some hangups on structural lead times as well as the design. Princeton Avenue, so that was actually a drainage project where we were coordinating with New Jersey American Water to have them install curb along the rear end property, the easternmost rail outstall of Princeton Avenue. And the Crab Dock, so we are looking at some alternative locations for the Crab Dock, where it was initially proposed. I don't think it's warranting us proceeding at this point due to where it sits at low and high tide, so we're looking for an alternate location and then that would be, what that would require as it relates to permitting. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Council, any questions, comments?
So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
May I have a question? Agenda meeting?
First agenda is Resolution 94, authorizing the appointment of Special Law Enforcement to Officer DeMarcus Malory.
Any questions, Council? CNN.
Open the office will be done at regular session. Ordinance number six, second reading, public hearing held for a regular session. Amendment, Chapter 195 regulating the operation of local retail food businesses.
Any questions, Council?
Resolution 95, authorizing appointment of Police Officer to Eric Green.
I have a question. For Resolution 95, did Mr. Green start already?
He's in a caddy.
He's in a caddy.
It's the same for 96.
So, I'm just asking in the future for 95 and 96, if we can just follow the procedures, the policies and procedures for the open office for any new hire of police officers?
Resolution 96, authorizing appointment of Police Officer Xavier Cruz.
Any questions? CNN.
Resolution 97, approved to submit a municipal aid grant application and execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation.
Any questions, Council? CNN.
Resolution 98, approved to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Bike Way Grant Program.
Any questions, Council? May I have a deal? Give us an explanation on this, please.
Certainly. So, Resolutions 97, 98, 99, and 100 are all of your NJDOT grants for 2025. These resolutions just allow the city to give notice to NJDOT that the city will be submitting applications for those projects, and those projects will be discussed at the respective committees.
Thank you. Transfer.
Resolution 100, approved to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Safe Streets to Transit Program.
Any questions, Council? CNN.
Resolution 101, authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Government Workers Union, Law Rule 710 and 71.
Any questions, Council? CNN.
Resolution 102, approving the renewal of public licenses for the 2024 through 2025 term.
Any questions, Council? CNN.
Resolution 103, approving the renewal of plenary retail consumption license licenses for the 2024 through 2025 term.
Any questions, Council? CNN.
Resolution 104, approval, approving the renewal of plenary retail distribution license for the 2024 through 2025 term.
Any questions, Council? CNN.
Please note, this renewal is for all licenses. This would be completed at this meeting. Resolution 105, authorizing a person-to-person transfer of a plenary retail consumption license to Cedar Liquor Market LLC.
Adam Kurt, can you give an explanation of this resolution?
This was a pocket license that was obtained for several years, and now the buyer is Cedar Liquor Market that plans on opening up on Main Street. I believe it's on the resolution on the address they plan on opening up.
Any questions?
And all, all process has been done as far as background checking and clearance. That also includes the source of income clearance, and it's been thoroughly verified with this department. It's also been presented before the public safety for approval to vote for.
And this is only for the liquor license? This is not for the building that they want to, there has been nothing done?
No, it states, it's a person-to-person transfer. So it's not at a place yet. There is an ideal location. However, the liquor license is just for a person-to-person.
Thank you. You're welcome. So the liquor license is not attached to the location?
No, they put down where they anticipate, but the actual owner had no location, so it's a person-to-person transfer. And once it becomes a ideal and gets approved by the city, then they will update ABC regarding where they plan on having it. There is anticipated location, it's located on the resolution, that's on the application, but that doesn't mean that they are attached to that location. It's for a person-to-person transfer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
106?
Resolution 106, grant approval to the Society in Espanyol for Colombian Holiday in the City on July 26 at the Tilton Avenue Ballpark.
Any questions, Council? July 26.
Oh, thank you. Maybe it should be on 106, but it's 106. Right.
Yes.
Resolution 107, grant approval for a church cultural festival to Odd Lady Starling East on July 26 through 28.
Any questions, Council? CNN.
Resolution 108, authorizing the tax collector to cancel municipal lien on a property acquired by the city.
Any questions, Council? CNN.
Next is reveal the bill list.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We'll go over the bills, we'll page to the next council meeting, this council meeting. On page 1, you're drawing two minor ones, down at the bottom of our transfers, you see $94,551, that was money we received for UEZ Phase 1 money. We moved it into their account. Everything will come into the current fund, and then we transfer it out. The next one, $546,000 was payroll for last week, and $149,000 is money we have received from the opiate settlement. We transferred, they finally refunded, we're able to open their own account, and we moved that money in. And just as a point of reference, I get notification today will be another $15,000 coming in for the opiate money. The bill looking to be approved, we're, we're going down to bottom of page 1, you'll see the sewer annual fee. This was the second quarter for, we paid ACUA, ACUA quarter, wage order treatment.
Mr. Williams, the payment, is that based on a fixed number of?
No, it's based on flow. Depending on how many gallons go through the system, they accumulate the whole tire accounting, and based on our percentage of flow, that's a percentage that they charge us for pay from the billing, from their budget.
Is there a ratio of flow to money, like?
They, they, they bill, I think it's like $27 per every million gallons. That's that number, based on their budget. And in years past, we've gotten money back from credit because our flow is not as high as anticipated. In other years, we've had to pay more because it's been more.
So it's a projection and then? Okay, thank you.
On page 2, halfway down into cost of payroll services, lists our second quarter payments to for cost of work, running our payroll and 195 employees that we do every two weeks. Go to page 3, third one, Edmund Gobtech, is some of the software that we use for both payroll and, I'm sorry, finance as well as tax collecting. That is, we, you know, we were able to take payments over phone or through the internet, and this is part of the fee that they charge us to set up the processing. Go down to page 4, and we're about to page 4, you'll see a couple things for Lafayette Utility. We had a problem with, these have, store repaired, they had to do some repair down there, and then $4,900, if you've been down west, east, Edgewater Avenue, they've graded all that and put recycled blacktop in there, so got rid of all the hot hole center. On top of page 5, we're starting getting into some of the things that are being done by Pathways Recovery, IDEO Technology, this is, they're sending, the grant sent people to them for construction training, as well as learning how to run a food truck. Going down a little further, Department of Education.
Barry.
Yeah.
This $15,000, is this the last payment?
It depends on how many people were going.
So it's the last payment. Close out payment, the program made the 31st, so we believe submitted all the invoices, so you probably should not see anything after this unless, we guess it ran again because we did reapply.
Thank you.
What is it that these people are learning now? Something about the food truck, is something they're going?
One of them is learning how to do, run a food truck, and the other two are learning the construction trade. They have a couple, most of, everybody we've sent there is more in the construction trade.
Would you mind submitting the names of those two, the individuals or the systems or schools? Do we, do we have them?
We have a name, I'm trying to, I will talk about that. And this last report, just so you know, we, we sent 31 clients to school between IDEO Institute of Technology, the medical school, and there was three schools for truck driving school. So, CDL, for CDL training. So, the State Department of Work for Labor actually commended us and said that we ended it strong. Our reimbursement, I think, was $87,000, $87,000 we were, we actually had 31 people going to school by the end of that.
How many are going to be finishing school by the end of?
We had 31 enrolled as of May, but throughout the 10-month program, we probably had 50-something people in school, but at the last, this last month, we had 31 enrolled between those three schools.
And you'll see in my bill list later, we have 13 people going for CDL licenses in the educated, training for train condition. Again, on page 5, two-thirds way down is the school tax of $130,000 we pay on a monthly basis. We go to page 6, halfway down to the Ernest Transportation School, there are 13 people that are being sent to CDL training. And other than that, all the other bills are normal operating bills that make the city go where it goes. Any questions?
Yes, page 3. It says Firefighter 1 LLC, it says replacement in unit equipment. What is that?
In the contract, we provide them uniforms. If they want something above and beyond material, it's called Nomax equipment, they have an opportunity to buy up to $350 worth of stuff, we'll reverse them for, it's better grade rather than just giving them clothing allowance, that's been in the contract right for three, four, five years. Not a lot of them do it, but some of the newer guys want better equipment, better clothing, better material.
How many uniforms is this?
Just, it comes under, under uniform allowance, we give them a uniform allowance.
Okay, I'm following you.
But just extra above that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I want to ask a question, maybe the DA can answer. How are the people selected to go to the training?
So, through the Pathways program, we had what we call intakeers. They were two, we actually had four, we started out with four, we ended up with two, but those people actually were, their boots went around, they went out, they advertised the program, and then we targeted unemployed people. So, anybody, the way that the program is set up, any individual in Atlantic County who was impacted by opioid, doesn't mean that you or anyone in your family were users, you are impacted. My neighbor was a user or, so almost all of us are eligible now, with the exception that you are unemployed. So, we reached those people through the different agencies that we connected with, one stop is one of the agencies, and then you just, they do an intake form and find out what their need is, and a lot of it was training to get them back into the workforce.
And out of 50, 31 stayed in the program.
No, 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 we probably put around 50 in school, but this is, today's invoice is reflecting the 31.
I mean, that's a pretty good percentage.
That's a really good percentage.
And others have graduated through the program.
Right, yeah. A lot of them went through the medical school. I don't see that bill here, but I know there, there was some medical training as well.
I think in the past, we paid a medical bill for the, for trainings, schooling for medical training.
I have one other question for page 3. I know the, the amount is very minimal, but it says vertical de-escalation training. What department is that for?
Which one's that for?
14389, the third one from the bottom on page 3.
That is for police department.
Council, anything else? Thank you, Barry. Madam Chair? What's the discussion? Madam Data? No. Council, you have anything to add? CNN, motion to close the discussion?
Motion, sir.
All in favor? May I have a motion to close the discussion?
Motion, sir.
All in favor? The time is 6:55. This is the City of Pleasantville City Council Meeting. Today is June 17, 2024. The time, once again, is 6:55. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city newspaper in accordance with the Open Publics Meetings Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Please stand for implication, glass, please. I'll follow. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the citizens of our land, with all due respect, and with all the best of the good. Davenport, got my lawyer on? Here. Cabona?
Present.
Correa?
Present.
Barclay?
Present.
Obersting?
Thomas? Present. May I have a motion to dismiss previous minutes?
Motion, sir.
May I have a second?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have any populations, combinations?
No, do not.
Next, we have public portion.
First, we have Ms. Andy Thompson.
First, I'd like to congratulate our mayor. Thank you. Council people.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of Pleasantville Chapter AARP. We are, as I said, the Pleasantville chapter, we chartered in 2000, so we are about to celebrate our 25th year as a chapter here in Pleasantville next year. We have been meeting at North Main, South Main, the high school, and the library now, we have the library. When I came to the forum, NAACP forum that they gave, all the council people or the candidates said they were looking to work for the children and the seniors, so here I am, I'm a senior. And we need a place to meet. We have, as I said, met at those places through all the years. We were pretty successful at the high school, but after COVID, we've had a problem trying to get back to the high school, so we're at, at the library. So we would like to have a place here in Pleasantville where all seniors can meet, where they can play games, knit, sew, meet, have meetings, not just AARP, but we need a place here in Pleasantville for the seniors to meet. We have no idea where. The rec center is really not conducive to a senior environment meeting place for us to socialize, or, like I say, for seniors to have their meetings. And we only meet once a month, all right? So I'm speaking for seniors, I'm not speaking just for us. Our chapter meets once a month, September through June, and for three Our chapter meets once a month, September through June, and for three hours, two to three hours. So, it's not like we're asking for a lot or anything for just us. We're talking about the Pleasantville seniors need a place to meet here in Pleasantville. Most communities have a senior location, and we have nothing for our seniors. So, that's why I'm here. Oh, the high school. It's my understanding when the high school and the middle school were built, they were built for not only the students, but for the community. And we have, we did meet there for a while, and I've had some pushback. So, you know, we're just trying to find out what to do. I'll go to a school board meeting too, but that's where we are right now. We need a place to meet.
The reason it was brought to your attention, understanding that it's a separate entity, but it was built with the understanding that it had community and city support. So, we don't know if you could help or not. There's, there's a problem right now. Well, it's a problem seeming, I don't know if you know exactly, but we've applied and applied and applied and given the old-fashioned runaround.
Ms. Andy, what did you say, September?
We meet September through June. Our chapter meets, but we're talking about something for seniors all year, the twelve months, not just, not just for us. We're talking about the seniors. Someplace where the seniors can gather and, you know, have meetings, games, socialize, like other communities have.
Hi, Sandy.
Hi, Julie.
Yes, I was one that would study, and you know, when I, when I talk one-on-one, I'm always trying to find a place because we definitely, definitely need it. The answer that, the only thing that I can think of, the answer that I have is so far in advance, it's not, it's not a quick remedy for right now. But at the high school, you were meeting on Saturday mornings, right?
Yes, we've always met Saturday morning.
Okay, that was Saturday.
Once a month.
Okay. And then at the recreation center, that's good for games and all that. Is that working out okay? It's not working out?
It's not.
Even though it's early in the morning?
Well, it's, it's not really conducive to, like I say, if you had a senior citizen, you don't have to worry about not being able to go because the children are there.
No, okay, I get that part.
Not being able to use the facility. So, that's what I'm saying, the rec center is not the place for the seniors. We want our own.
The rooms aren't that large.
Aren't that large, no. We've done bingo there, we've had the movies there, but we need more. We want more.
About how many members does that need when you meet?
We are, we about, yeah, sometimes. We have, we have nineteen members on our road, on our A A R P. But when we have our meetings, we average anywhere from twenty-five to maybe forty people.
We fill the library.
Yeah. And at the school, we have the tables so we could have nice refreshments and sit and relax and chat and chew because we meet from eleven to one, but usually eleven to eleven-thirty is our chat and chew time. At the library, we can't do that because we're sitting in rows of chairs like this. So, it's not conducive to socializing. So, we need a place.
Would you like to be back there if they would consent to you being there right now?
Oh, yeah, we wanted to get back there. Paperwork, baby.
Yeah, Mr. LaPelle or Dr. LaPelle would be here.
Yeah, we would love to go back to the school until y'all find us a real nice place.
I volunteer to go with Dr. Chapman.
Okay.
To see Dr. Martinez and see.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yes.
How are you?
I'm fine.
When's the next time you guys are set up to meet?
We're finished for our season. We meet September through June, so we don't meet until September.
Until September.
Four months in a row.
Yeah, so you would be ready by September?
Hopefully.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Renee Brown. Ms. Renee?
Renee Brown, one through six, West Adams Avenue. First, let me just give you guys a friendly reminder that the deadline for city code two, move the campaign side, signs us for tomorrow, and it's a hundred to a thousand dollars per offense. And has to study that sometime.
Thank you, Renee.
Oh, the other thing I wanted to ask about is, does anybody have anything to report on rent control?
Rent controls. We had a meeting today and we're doing some checking up on a couple of things that the landlords requested, so we're still working on that right now.
Okay, would you care to share what they're requesting?
They're going to get it over to us. They haven't gotten it over to us. We had a meeting, preliminary meeting, they discussed with them and they said they would.
And they didn't tell you what they want?
They just wanted to talk about things in general. As the attorney, I'm not going to go into the specifics of it, but they're going to give us their stuff in writing. I don't want stuff in writing. I don't like it verbally.
Okay. One of the things that I know that they are asking for is to, um.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dan.
The landlords are asking that when they've moved people in place, right? And the place is not up to code, so when the people move, um, once the people are in there, they want to be paid for renovations to bring it up to par, which it should be before they move in. And they want to charge a tenant for it. So, I'm, we don't agree with that. Okay, so I'm just, you know, they're guessing.
Yes, so I think to help us with this process, Renee, I had a good question. And just like the attorney said, we want to see what they're requesting in writing. But we did explain to them that part of the process will be, once we meet with them, that we're going to meet with the citizens, right? So, there's nothing that's going to be presented to full council or to the public without everybody understanding what's being put on the table. So, you guys will have your opportunity. We said that we would give them about five or ten days or so to give us the information. Once we get that, we'll review it and then hopefully we'll meet with them again and then we'll meet with you all.
Okay.
Okay? And feel free to, you know, ask about, you know, the updates in between, but right now, that, that is the steps.
Okay. Renee? I just want to, you know, let you know that we're aware of that and don't believe that. I don't know how y'all feel, but.
Yeah, so we'll get together and talk through that, okay?
Okay.
And what other, other issues that are out there?
You have another question?
I did, I'm trying to find it. Oh, um, is there any update from recreation on upgrading the playgrounds? Like, when will that start? Or will it be, when will something be completed, like for the summer, for the kids, like?
One, just go through her report. Is there any way we can give a copy to this to Ms. Brown?
So, yeah, this is, this is a public document at this point, I believe. But I, too specific to her questions, she's been asking about playground equipment and all of that. That's really not on here. So, I'll get that information if you can call my office. I'll let you know who's met with recreation. All of the playgrounds have been assessed. We know what's needed. We're getting quotes and making sure that we can get the equipment in for summer.
Okay, I wasn't just talking about equipment, though. I was talking about the things they said they were going to do, like repaving tennis courts and.
That's part of this report, so you can get that, yeah.
All right, okay, that's fine. And, and also cutting the grass in the playgrounds. I went to Lee's Avenue and the grass was about this high. And people were leaving because they couldn't enjoy themselves. But they're okay.
You're asking me to get on top of that now?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. May I have a motion to close public portion?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First, Resolution ninety-three, authorizing deportment of special law enforcement to Officer Mark Malora.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in.
Roll call.
Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Coria?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Next is the office for Mr. Malora.
This is the open office, State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. We may have to make. I
Mark Malora.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And the Constitution
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same.
And the government established
And the government established.
And the United States
The United States.
Lead this state
And this state.
Under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully
And I will faithfully.
And partially
And partially.
And justly
And justly.
Perform all the duties
Perform all the duties.
Of the Office of
Of the Office of.
Special Law Enforcement Number Two Officer.
Special Law Enforcement Number Two.
And that's that one up there. Special Law Enforcement Two Officer.
Special Law Enforcement Two Officer.
For the City of Pleasantville.
For the City of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Congratulations.
I was hired, it's kind of weird because this is my wife, Melissa Malora. We put in originally under Mayor Mel Peterson in June of two thousand and three. And now twenty-one years, I think, for here we are now.
Okay, glad to have you back. Thank you, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, first is ordinance number six, second reading, public hearing required. Mentioned in Chapter one ninety-five relating to the operation of mobile retail food businesses. Anyone from the public would like to speak? On behalf of ordinance number six. What is, what is going to say? The mobile retail food truck business. See, do you know one? May I have a motion to close?
Motion, second.
Roll call. Motion for roll call? That one?
Motion.
May I have a second? Roll call. Kamala?
Yes, to one ninety-five fifty-four A and B and no to C.
So, what is that number for, what is that section?
Excuse me? It, it's the places where they're allowed to.
And what number was that?
C.
C?
Yes, C.
So, number that. Kamona?
Yes.
Coria?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
What is adopted? Resolution ninety-five, authorizing the report of police officer to Eric Green.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Coria?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution ninety-six, authorizing appointment of police officer to Xavier Cruz.
Motion, second.
Roll call. Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Coria?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution ninety-seven, approve to submit a municipal aid grant application and execute a grant agreement with N J D O T. May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Roll call. Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Coria?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution ninety-eight, approve to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the bikeway grant applica, program.
Motion.
May I have a motion?
Second.
Roll call. Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Coria?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution ninety-nine, approve to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the N J D O T for the Transit Village Grant Program. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Coria?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred, approve to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the N J D O T for the Safe Streets to Transit Program. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call. Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Coria?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred and one, authorize the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the city and the government workers' union law rules seven ten and seven twenty. May I have a motion?
Second.
Roll call. Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Coria?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred and two, approve of the renewal of public licensees for the twenty-fourth through twenty-five term. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call. Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Coria?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred and three, approve of the renewal of culinary retail assumption liquor licenses for the twenty-fourth through twenty-five term. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Coria?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred and four, approve of the renewal of culinary retail distribution liquor licenses for twenty-fourth through twenty-five term. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call. Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Coria?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred and five, authorizing the person-to-person transfer of a culinary retail assumption liquor license to C D L Liquor Market L L C. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Coria?
Yes. Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred and six grant approval to the Society in Espanol for a Colombian holiday on July the twenty-first.
Motion, second.
Roll call. Camilara?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred and seven grant approval for a church cultural festival to Our Lady Star of the East on July the twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call. Camilara?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred and seven authorize the tax collected to cancel this lien on a property acquired by the city. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Camilara?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. I need a motion to approve the buildings.
Motion, second.
Roll call. Camilara?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion approved. Next, I need a motion to approve B-horn gravel licenses.
Motion, second.
Roll call. Camilara?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion approved. Next is comments from council and mayor. May I have any comments?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and say to Mark Malar that I'm glad to have him back as our last two officers. And also, as AARP left already. But I'm happy that they've been in the city. I didn't realize it was twenty-five years. And hopefully, we'll find a place. At the high school, we're comfortable. Actually, we can be better. And that's it. Everyone have a good evening.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments if you want?
Anything further from me? I just want to make the committee aware that the governing body has an opportunity to reach out to you through the mayor's meeting and through my own committee, which is responsible for committee affairs as liaison. You can utilize the two mediums to send your points forward to the governing body before, you know, it gets late. So I'm always available. I'm on wheels. At the committee meeting, you signal me, I can be there as a liaison to inform the body of your concern. Also, the mayor is available. She's always hosting meetings. Let us use those opportunities to discuss our city and our problems in a proactive fashion. Thank you very much. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out. Have a blessed, safe day and night.
I want to say congratulations to Officer Malar. Welcome to the family once again. And I just want to say that I'm excited about this C of N report. This is the first time since I've been here that I see it for four pages, which is exciting. That means we're doing something here. And, you know, I just can't wait to see all the work to be finished. And good night, everyone, and happy Juneteenth. And may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
All in favor?